We're having a nice night and we finally got water more than our own lawn, a cool house.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to help everybody. We're gonna change the floor mat a little bit. Whitney is putting it up first because she's got other commitments. And I want to go change order on RQAW. Let her have the floor first so we can get her out here and then we'll just follow the floor mat right after that, okay?
It's a great gift for me. Okay, so I have two orders of business. The first one is for the actual construction going on for the water mains. It is a change order that would be completely covered by existing contingency. It is because the contracts were signed 90 days after we had put the bids out, OCR required us to update the Davis Bacon rate requirement. And because of that, there was one major change. And the contractors are now going to need to pay certain laborers actually $4 more an hour from that Davis Bacon requirement. And then the other thing that it includes is a new hydrant to replace an existing broken hydrant, or rather, it's like a flushing hydrant that's at the end of the easement behind the homes that are east of State Route 1, up on the north side of town. So there's an existing very small, like three-inch flushing hydrant that'll be replaced with a regular full-service fire hydrant that'll actually work and be able to fight fire in the event that there was something going on there.
The one you were talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was... So that would both be included in the change order. Like I said, it would be completely covered by existing contingency. The town does not need to put any dollars forward for this. And there would still be some money left over in contingency for any other unforeseen circumstances. Actually, this isn't even a large portion of that, so... The change order total is $22,000 on the $1.9 million contract, so it ends up being $1.938 total contract price at the end. And I mean, I knew that Terry was effectively basically retiring today, so I wanted to make sure I was able to produce it for the council because technically he can just sign it, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of it instead of just having him process it. So I thought that would be better practice for this. That is the first order of business, and that one's much simpler, but basically I just need to get a vote or an okay on that so that I can have the contractor move forward and purchase the hydrant and give them their employees on the proper payroll. Any questions about that one?
First, ask the hydrant that you had questions about?
Yeah. That's the floor later.
And then I gave Terry a copy of it, so if that does get signed, I would just need to have it scanned, or I could take it back to the office with me and scan it and send you guys a copy of it so that I can get that back to Lincoln's. And then attachments are just the, all the information about how much money more they have to pay labor and operator for an hour, and like how the breakdown all comes out for the hydrant, everything else like that. We've already creeped that in all of those dollars to make sure that they made sense.
Guess I need a motion. People had an interclaiming motion for approving the changes.
Now, there's two separate change orders?
One is for the construction project. One would be for engineering services, but I'll still present that. That's completely separate from this.
Oh. So, but on this change order, so it's a new hydrant and then the increase of $4 an hour for which laborers?
So the operators, because of Davis Bacon wage changes and what OCR was requiring us to update, the operators are now going to make $4 an hour more, and the laborers are now going to make $5.
Just to let everybody know, Davis Bacon is federal wage laws. They have to go by.
Yeah. For the...
Right, I understand that. But that's, these two items are on one change order?
Correct. Everything is wrapped into the same one. If for some reason you didn't want to approve the hydrant, I can redo the change order for the Davis Bacon, but the Davis Bacon is a requirement of OCR, so...
Well, I'll make a motion to approve these, the change orders for RQAW.
Motion being made. Second to approve the change order for RQAW. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? Motion carries.
Okay, so my other order of business is a contract amendment for engineering services. I basically put the amendment together to be on our existing engineering contract, but what it includes is a number of items in order to resubmit to SRF for the town to go for additional funding for the remainder of the work that was not included in this grant round. And then it also goes through full bidding, construction administration, construction inspection. Obviously, all of that is contingent on whether or not additional grant funding would be received. And, you know, we're not going to start engineering services for any of those things without having to go ahead of the town to make sure that they want to move forward with whatever new package they might receive from SRF. But this amendment basically just puts in place the dollar amounts for each of those things and locks you guys in, so that way if, you know, our rates increase or anything like that, you would still have this amendment. So I wanted to go ahead and process that so that you could know that you're on our docket for next year if they give you an extra however much it takes to complete the rest of the work. That being said, the only imminent item would be the resubmittal. In order to resubmit, I basically have to amend the PER and resend that into SRF and then update the, they have a thing called a DAC memo that's basically a memorandum about the town and like a disadvantaged memorandum. And then it also has update for an asset antitrust, and the total fee for that is, I think, $6,500 in a lump sum. And then everything thereafter would be contingent upon whether or not SRF gives an additional funding package for the remaining work. But the next items would be resubmitting documents and rebidding the remainder of the work. And then construction administration for that project and construction inspection for that project.
What percentage of the total project are we getting down to first round?
Um, I believe, well, I have the, I thought I had the exhibit with me. I believe it's like 40% of the linear work. But let me double check that. So it's 31% of the linear work, but then there's the remaining meter change out, any remaining lead service line replacement, that would be a part of, or well, there's a part of lead service line replacement, that's the current project that is in addition to that 30%. And then there's all the work to add in, the new bulk water filling station, the work at the tower to put in the meter change, to change out the meters to radio read, that's all in the first project too. So like dollar figure wise, it's closer to 40% of the total. And basically, this would be all of the remainder of the items that were in the PER. So in order to get re-scored at the highest score, we would want to put in for the rest of the lead service lines, or some portion of additional lead service lines that would be replaced with this, with this portion, so that you got full points for that because that's a big part of SRF scoring. And that would maintain a standard scoring bracket to what you got last time. So you put the town at the best foot forward to be able to move forward. But other than that, it would just be the same for the new ones that are already designed.
So the $6,500, we would pay RQAW?
And that would be a resubmit to SRF.
Right, so that's not part of, and you have the current grant money, this is just kind of going down the road.
Right. It'd be the same type of process as what you did through this round, where you could potentially have to reimburse it or do it through like a, for that portion of it, or any other engineering services, where you could do it similarly to this one, but yes, it would be going down the line because that would have been covered.
Okay, so approving that tonight just approves that we're going to do this work, that you're going to do this work.
Correct.
But we don't have to pay anything until that time comes where you're going to actually do it.
Yeah. So really, the only thing that this would be, that I would move forward with doing from this, is to resubmit to SRF. And we would, I believe we would invoice for that, but that could be paid with bond or like note, the way that you did the previous one there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But that is just that $6,500 line item. The other larger line items would all be the same process, but that would be all after you were able to secure funding and know. Because we're not going to start rebidding or doing any further, you know, adjustment to contract happens until we know that you have what you would need to move forward. And that process would be fairly fast since it's all already been designed. Really, for rebidding, I just need to update like dates in the specifications, take out the sheets that we've already done, adjust the existing sheet so that they match a new standard set. But a mass majority of that engineering work has already been completed, so that's why the rebid phase is not like what you would see for a full engineering project, because you've already done it.
So do we need a new separate contract for this part, or?
This would be an amendment to the original contract.
Just an amendment to the original contract.
Yeah, so that way it's all the same like terms that we've already had, and the town has already, you know, 3-2 and everything like that, so that way we don't have to reprocess anything with regard to the original contract. So this would just be an amendment to that.
Okay. Well, we'll still need to get our town attorney involved though.
Sure. Yeah. Whatever you guys prefer.
I'm trying to think of additional expenses that town was...
Yeah. Yeah, it's perfectly fine. I just wanted to come present it, make sure that everyone was aware of it. However, we proceed from tonight is there's no timeline on it. The only thing is that I will need to be able to resubmit to SRF so that it can be rearranged for the next calendar year. And it does go on their scoring list accordingly, like whenever you do put it in. So you do get bonus points if you submit a little bit sooner. But the last day that I can submit that is, I believe, April 1st. So there's still several months, and the actual timeline of me being able to submit that is really only a couple few weeks of my work at most, just coordination and everything like that, waiting on other parties. But once I get to go ahead, I could just make that be my main priority and get it out the door.
Dwight, do you understand where she's coming from?
Yeah.
Because you've got to be dealing with this. Do you have any questions for her? Okay.
No.
Because that's, that's it. You've got to be making down the road, not us. Does anybody have any more questions for Whitney?
And the only thing would be before Terry fully checks out, to send the...
I'll tell you the book.
Okay. You're gonna still, okay, whatever. I'm not sending you anymore emails. So before you leave or you retire, just forward the DocuSign stuff to Andy so that she has it, so that they can, whenever they do decide to move forward with it or haven't gotten it checked out and everything, they still have that DocuSign, because it's all been sent over from our, our little department, so... And then I'd be more than happy if any other questions come up or anything like that. I can always answer emails, or I can come down to another meeting, or whatever we need. I'm here for you guys, so whatever is needed, just let me know.
Are you looking for approval tonight on this?
Mm-hmm.
Or is something we can...
Yeah.
Because we got new council coming in next week.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. I just want to make sure that all the questions get answered in favor of you, if the old council, new council has anything, and then I'll leave you guys to do what you do. I don't need to, it doesn't need to happen right now. Like I said, we have until April to submit, so as long as I have it in hand, you know, ideally like February timeline, just to make sure we have enough time, that would be great. But yeah, I understand that you're changing everything up, so you've got a lot of parties involved. See, one more question, Bruin, so if there's anything else, just let me know, and then... Oh, I'll take that one too. So do you need a copy of this?
We do.
Okay, cool. Anything else? Can you hear from anybody?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, sounds good. Let me know, send me an email.
Thanks, Whitney.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, first thing on January procedure now is swearing in a few council members. Bruce, come on up here. You guys come on up here.
I'll give you a first.
This is one at a time, or you want to do it all at once?
I think you'll all, once.
All at once? Okay, you guys raise your right hand and repeat. Aye, state your name, do solemn swear.
Aye, I must swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge my duties as council member from the town of Milton. Faithfully, honestly, and impartially. Discharge my duties as council member for the town of Milton, Indiana, according to law and the best of my abilities, so help me God. Guys, we're signing those. I already got yours. Congratulations or... Whatever. Okay, under old business, we had bids about painting the fire station, but I think consensus was we want to get the windows replaced before we do the paint job. So we haven't got any quotes on the windows yet. You got somebody in mind who's doing the quotes? Aye. Who's doing the, who's supposed to be doing the quotes on it? That, I don't know if you guys are doing it, or if you want us to do it.
Well, I thought, uh... Yeah, that's what I thought too.
He's supposed to be here now, he said he'd be late.
He said he'd be late.
So you guys want a table to paint till we find out? Do we get, and I'd agree with you, it's better to get the windows in first, because he wants to tire out the other thing. I could just paint it to put a window in, that's probably the best route to go. Motion being made, second to go ahead and table one. Bid we got for painting the firehouse, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those the same? You guys are here. We haven't got about you, just a procedure that we want to follow on that.
I know.
Next thing on here is manhole covers. Terry, you got that one?
Actually, Bruce could tell us more about it. Just got some of our manhole that we've seen here in Conner's that are deteriorating. These replaced.
It's the whole concrete from the sewer gases. They've actually deteriorated the concrete. And one of them there, right up from the cemetery on the right, on one, it's the ring around the lid has completely rotted away, and the lid's fallen down in it. Just thank goodness it missed the stuff down in it.
I've got a question. Is there something we can do to prevent that from building out, or?
There's a resin coating that they coat on the inside of the walls of those that would keep it from ever happening again.
Is there something we can put in our sewer to stop it?
Hmm, I'm not aware of anything.
So the actual catcher basin is...
Yeah, it's, it's just like outer...
If there's something available, it would be better, that you're wearing it.
They said that stuff, they spray paint on the inside of them, it's like an epoxy that won't deteriorate.
Yeah, I thought it should hold up for how long?
I don't know if they give a good timeframe or not, but how long have those been in? 10 years?
Oh, more than that.
Yeah. 2012? 2012?
Yeah. About 13 years.
13 years.
Yeah. 13, I'll figure 13, 14.
How many are we talking about? Have you got any quotes on it?
Just two. It's really, it's the one right there up from the cemetery on the right, and then the very last one, it's like in front of like tables on a permanent building in Conner's area.
Bruce, can we say when they could do the thorough on that?
They didn't say when, they just, they didn't really say when.
Is there something we can do to make one that's falling in safer?
Need to put a piece of steel on top of it. I've got a...
He did?
No, I've got a rubber lock on top now. I need to get a piece of steel cut.
Are there more on that this could become a problem with?
Not that I've seen. When we replaced the, and cleaned those pop-off valves, those two were really the bad ones at the time.
How many have we got down to there?
Six or seven.
Seven manhole.
Seven.
We have no choice, we have to do it.
I'll say so.
Terry, what fund will I come out of sewer, and what else?
Sewer, we've got money in depreciation, we can handle it.
Now, you read that to where if they just replaced the basin, that was the one price, but if they put the resin on, on the inside and re-sleeve it, that was the other price? Did, is that how you read it? That's how I read it.
Yeah. Look on the yellow.
That way it doesn't...
Doesn't totally what it's there.
Right, that's total, to do, to do this one here.
Private one is, I can't see it.
The basin's alone was $3,000.
I wore my glasses today.
$9,840.
Real station.
I got a bike over by, I can't run my clothes like that. Everything's like a border.
Pump on the bioxide working appropriately?
Do that, Bruce, pump on the bioxide working?
There's two pumps on it. One of them is working, but the other one is not. And the numbers that I've called that's on it, it's not even, it doesn't exist.
Really?
There's someone that calls every year and asks you how the bioxide is.
Refill them.
I don't know who that is, but...
So we don't have anybody that does anything about those pumps?
Unless Cooley does.
I think before I find out while I'm while working, that probably would help some.
It wouldn't have did to all the, wouldn't it did to all the basins, not just two?
Well, that's what I was wondering, have you looked at the other, there's some?
Yeah.
Don't interclaim the motion. You guys want to do that?
I don't think we have much of a choice.
No, we don't.
Do you want to do, do we want to do the correct fix with the epoxy coat and everything?
I would think so.
Out of two?
Yeah, that total was $9,840.
How much is it?
$9,840. That's the one using composite liner. It is about double anyway to the other one.
Yeah. I'll make a motion now, if Cooley do this, work on these two manhole covers.
Motion being made, second to go ahead and approve the work on the manholes. At a price of $9,840. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those the same? Motion carries. Bruce, how can we find out about the other motor or pump, what's going on in there?
The bioxide?
Yeah.
I don't know who we, I'll ask, I'll ask him when I call to see when he can perform that work. I'll ask if they work on those pumps.
Yeah, I like to know that they're going to do that too.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll help them.
Can you may else have anything else under old business?
Bruce, have you heard anything from, about the streetlights?
No, I mean, they're ready to put out, it's just turping now, we don't turp.
What about the one that's not burning down there?
The one got ordered, didn't you call them, John, and order that one right after it happened? John, did you call that company? Somebody called, because I talked to the fellow that delivered those, and he said that someone called the day that it happened.
That white three on this one side and one on this west side is not working?
No, no. The lights, those Christmas lights need to be replaced.
The streetlight itself's not burning?
The street lamp itself's not?
It wasn't burning, the other one went through there.
It was one that was out, he put a bulb in it.
The three on this west side did not have one down there.
Okay, I'll look at it. I wasn't aware of that.
Anything else under old business?
Well, as everybody can see, the two big sickle mores are gone. It was a sad day, I went over there, saw them laying there, but now that it's all cleaned up, I think it's, was a good thing. And it turned out that the arborist who came and looked at them initially said that the one on the south side, he was more concerned about. And then it turned out that the one on the north side, which if we were going to only do one, we were going to do the one on the south side, and it turns out the one on the north side was actually in worse condition.
Yeah.
So it's good that they're gone, and it's safer for the public, and we don't have to worry about it online. So it's good that they're gone, it's safer for the public, we don't have to worry about it, liability for the town. That's all I got on old business.
County business, witness unspoken left. Agenda Phyllis, you're up.
Well, if you had a look at the sign, you can see we added some new numbers to it, 1845, if you all see it. That's when the canal came through Milton. And we thought that would be better to identify that it was not this century that the canal came through. And these are reflective numbers and the printing of a Cambridge City, put those on today. This sign already has some holes here that were drilled when it was at the first location. But the president of the Canal Society would like to have his post back, if the town has some posts that they can use to mount a sign. Just metal posts would be fine, or if you wanted to build some kind of a wooden support for the sign, that would be okay too. I drove around town last week looking for a place and, excuse me. You talked about the Zeebo Park and I took the sign down there and I couldn't find a nice place to put it, but the arrow was in the right place. So I came up to the school park and the last city light at the school park would be a good place to put it. Because that's reflective tape, the 1845 is reflective and so it would be under the street light. The street light is close to the sidewalk, so the sign could sit between the street light and the sidewalk. It wouldn't be in the way of mowing and it would be visible along State Road 1, which is what the Canal Society was hoping for. And the president said he wants it in Milton. We could have moved it to a location farther south, but he wants the sign in Milton. And he wants Milton people to be aware of the history of this town.
When we have your permission from the school to put that up there, so it's their property, right?
It's a school property?
No, not right here.
All part.
No, we use schools there.
Oh, the old, the old school, I got you, I got you, I'm sorry.
What street would it direct them down, North Street then? Would it be?
State Road 1.
I know, but the arrows are pointing.
South and north.
So the final.
The sign would be on the west side of State Road 1.
Okay, because when it was sitting up at Powell, wasn't it facing, was facing, if you were heading south on one and the arrows were pointing east and west, wasn't it?
Yes, that's right.
So that's what I'm saying, would it, how's it gonna sit now? Is it gonna sit over where the old school is, facing one as you're coming south on one, is that?
Right, just like it's, just like it's, just like it is right now.
Yeah.
Just like that, it'll be along the sidewalk.
Right, but that's, so that's facing different than it originally was.
Yes.
Because now it's facing north and south, it's pointing toward Cambridge.
That would be facing the east. That wouldn't be facing the east.
It's on the west side of the street.
Mm-hmm.
So Lawrenceburg is south and Cambridge City is north.
I know.
So the arrows are right.
Yes, the arrows are right, but when it was sitting over at Powell, it wasn't sitting currently?
No.
Yes, it was right because the canal went across where State Road 1 crosses right there. All those power poles coming across the field.
Okay.
And going down Powell's property.
Uh-huh.
That was right, that was a perfect place for it, but we can't have the liability.
Okay.
Can't have that liability for Powell paving, of having people come in there looking for the canal. So this is an alternative.
Yeah, I, thanks for clearing that up, I wasn't sure why the orientation of the sign was changing, but now I understand.
That's my suggestion, that you guys could decide where you went.
Do we have bolts?
We can get them.
Some four by fours or something?
Oh, you got kind of bolts, yeah, we can do that. I'll let you on a street bolt, like a stop sign bolt.
That would be better.
Do you understand?
I understand.
Are you guys just gonna put it up?
So that's the one that Powell took down?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the one that Powell took down?
I took it down.
Yeah.
Anybody have any comments, questions about that?
I'm okay with that location.
Bruce, we'll get with you, we'll get some bolts up, get that up.
Yeah, sure will.
Thank you for bringing that back and it not getting lost. You have nothing else, we'll move right along, that's what we'll do, we'll put it up there where you said.
Thank you.
And when you're ready, we can carry it out for you just a second.
Next on the agenda is Brett, here.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
My name's Brett Leland, I own THL Fire Equipment, I'm Hagerstown and I rep Dingus Fire. I had heard that there may be some interest in turnout gear and air packs for the fire department, so I made a call. And spoke to the lady in the office and she said, well, I'll put you on the agenda this evening. So here I am, I've got a demo bag out in my Jeep I can drag in if everybody wants to learn about turnout gear, I'm more than happy to do that this evening. Or we can just use it as an introduction, I've got some, I've got some information on our different gear that we offer. And then along with air packs, I've got a demo air pack out there as well. I don't know what you want to do as far as this evening is how in depth you want to go, but I'm willing to do whatever you really like.
To start with, we'd have to, I mean we're talking high dollars, we'd have to see what grants are available.
Okay, and I did get ahold of Republic First National Leasing Company today and I had them put some numbers together, just some quick numbers on a $50,000, $100,000, $150,000 purchase. So that you guys can review that as well and I can leave that here for you to look at. I don't know if that's an option, but it's just something that I try to do ahead of time before I come and meet with people, so. Air packs, I made three copies of this and I'd be more than happy to leave them up here for everybody and then I can scan these and email them to whoever doesn't get one. However, however you want to do that. So just for some, some quick numbers. We have, our median line is what we call super deluxe. And the average item is about $3,075 depending on the options and stuff that you pick. And then it goes all the way up to $3,525 per pant and coat. Our B-Force is the next, is our top of the line and it starts around $3,200 and then it can go up to $3,825. Again, there's all kinds of bells and whistles and options that you can pick to, to adjust the pricing of that. You know, it would just be sitting down with the fire department going through what they want, what they need. Putting a quote together that's built specifically for Milton, then presenting that back, back to the board. On air packs, we offer Dragger air packs, they're the number one air pack in the nation. Dragger makes more air packs than anybody else in the world. I was a big MSA guy before I started repping Dingus and there wasn't a better air pack out there as far as I was concerned. I went through the Dragger School and then did some training with them and they're a great pack. They're, the back of the pack frame has adjusted, is adjustable. Not every firefighter is built the same, so there's three positions that you can, you can set the pack at to raise and lower the weight. So when you're on the fire ground for an extended period of time, you're not, the pack is centered on your hip, not on your back.
That makes a big difference.
Do what? The, again, these are just, these are just numbers that I put together, there's discounts and things like that that would go along with it. A 7,000 series with all the adjustment and a, the lightest bottle left in the industry right now is about $9,159 per pack. We also have a 5,000 series that doesn't have any adjustment in the back, it's just a regular pack frame and a regular mask. And it goes, it's around $8,397. That's something that, again, you know, we would just have to look and see if you, if you wanted heads up displays. What that is, is there's a indicator in the mask itself that shows how much air you have in the bottle. You don't have to have that, there's a regulator that, or your monitor that's on your shoulder strap that you can look at and that can tell you as well. There's radio communication that's in the packs, that you can have interoperability between people that are inside, inside a structure when it's on fire and people that are outside. When you have it on a mask, it's hard to hear, it voice amplifies and then it also carries across the radio. I've thrown a lot of stuff out there really quick, again, I'm more than willing to do whatever I need to do. If you guys would want to do a workshop or something where I come in and gear it more towards the turnout gear so I can bring in the samples and show you the difference between the B-Force and the, and the super deluxe and difference in the packs and the bottles, I'd be more than happy to do that. I'd be more than happy to do it right now, I just need to know how it's gonna fit the schedule.
For some, we probably need to, probably do it for fire department or something.
Okay.
Fire department, township and town, the old president, we go through this, that way, all it's been the same page.
Yep, nope, and I'm 100% fine with that, like I said, I just wanted to get my name out here. I will leave this pricing sheet, I've just had one that kind of gives you, this is February 2023 pricing. So Dingus and Bryan has not come out and said they're gonna do a price increase, we did a 4% and 8% last year. This year we seem to be pretty good and then the quote for the, both SCBA's, I did for Wade Walling down at Fayette County EMA. I did them back on 118 and there's not a price increase for Dragger right now either that's, that we're talking about. So again, I'm gonna leave these, but these are just reference, please just note that it's reference, it's not in stone, it'll just have to be what, what options and what specifications and stuff that you, that you pick from a, from a department standpoint.
Is, is any of this equipment available to lease?
Yes.
Or purchase?
Yeah, and that's what.
And is that, do you think?
And that's what this is.
Your opinion on that option?
As far as the lease?
As far as the use of the equipment? Is it worth it in the long run to lease it or?
No.
Just asking your opinion.
Me?
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
With your experience.
You're not, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get a lot of money back in return, I guess if I'm, so you're, you're looking, can I lease it for five years and then give it back?
I don't know, I don't know how the lease program works.
Yeah, the lease purchase program is basically a dollar buyout at the end of, there's a three, a five, a three, a four and a five year lease. You know, so that would be, that would need to be set up by the town, township or fire department, whoever would set that, set that lease up. And then at the end of the lease is a dollar buyout. Now, on my department, I'm the assistant chief in accounting, the way we do it is we do a five year lease that's, that's every five years. NFPA says that you, structural fire gear has to be replaced every 10 years regardless. It can be in a box, sitting in a corner and if the in-service date is 10 years, it's, in NFPA concerns, it's, it's no good. Volunteer departments, you know, that's, that's not really feasible to, to change out 18 sets of turnout gear every, every five years. They also say that you have to have two, you have to have two sets for every, every firefighter. So what we've done is. What we've done is, our interior guys, they have, they have two sets of gear. But our, our guys that are more EMS oriented or they'll drive a truck or something like that, they're not gonna go into a burning structure. Their, their circulation is, is longer, they may go, they may go 15 years without getting a new set of gear. So every, every five years we get 10 new sets of gear is the way that, is the way that we have it set up. And then our air packs are, they just came out with, NFPA just came out with a new revision on the air pack standards that Dragger meets. So it'll be another 15 years and then they'll revisit that, so.
Look, like I said, this is a two-part thing. We're a 50/50 with township and that and we need to set up where everybody's involved, even at the fire station, do it there. So you can have your trustees there as well as your board there and get it all done at one time. I'm not putting you off, but.
No, no, no.
That'd be the best way to handle it.
Yeah, I just, I just, mainly alls I wanted to do was get here, you guys can put a, put a name.
A lot of people sitting here shaying ahead don't know what you're talking about, I'm serious.
You know, it's, it's a lot of money, I mean, don't get me wrong, I completely understand that and it's, and it's something that, yeah, I'm not a very good salesman. And the fact that I, you know, I like to bring it in and show it and then, you know, show the features and benefits that we do and then let you guys form your own opinions and try it on and play with it and you know, everybody has an opinion.
Right.
So, you know, our gears lighter, our packs are lighter, but until you get one on and until you try it, you don't, that's just talk, you know.
Yeah, that's a demonstration I'd like to see done with the actual fire, fire personnel.
Yeah, we have, I have a.
Because they'd be the ones that would, you know, try it on and say, oh, this is, you know, this is good, this isn't good.
As of right now.
I won't, I won't know what I'm looking, I wouldn't know what.
As of right now, I've got two guys that'd actually be good for two gears. Mainly since I'm on the engine most time, I don't need two gears.
Mm-hmm.
I have two and now we're trying to get two more worked in so it'd be on the inside. So it's just gonna vary on that.
So then, you know, along that same lines, I mean, if you have, and we may be, you guys can cut me off anytime, I can stand up here all day and talk about it. But, you know, if you have, if you have a crew that's strictly, they, all they do is EMS runs and car accidents. Well, they don't need structural firefighting gear, they need a MedPro, which is a bloodborne pathogen, flash fire and puncture resistant gear that's a lot less expensive. You know, so that, that may be a route to go for, for some of your guys, that's what we do with, with some of ours. You know, they're not gonna, they may go in and do a little bit of overhaul, but they're not, fire action is not something they're gonna do, so we just, we don't put the money in that, so.
What's the cost of that gear pretty good?
Oh, just a second here, I can tell you. That is, VersaPro Plus starts around $1,000. And again, you know, that's, that's pretty plain, if you, you know, let's say NFPA striping, if you wanted to go with New York striping and add pockets and a line, you know, you can, you can run the price up. But a good set of that gear is right around 11, 1150.
I got two ENTs, certified ENTs. We got another one here, it come up as an EMT. So possibly three, maybe four.
So if they're, if that's what they're gonna do, you know, that may be an option for them to have. for them to have, um, have a VersaPro style versus a full, a full set of gear, so. Anyways, um, any, any more questions? Anything else you need from me?
No, we appreciate you coming. Like I said, I thank you guys back for just, uh, work with these guys.
So what's the, what's the next step? What do we need to do to just?
They need to set up something.
Okay.
And we'd be, we'd be interested to have been town board and township to appointment or time to do that.
Okay.
Usually Monday nights is best for us.
Okay, and I, I can make that work, so.
And we really need to know what you guys check out and, um, what the expense is gonna be for.
We don't want to have all that fancy high-tech stuff on gear and stuff, but to voice command and stuff like that, that's a lifesaver. I mean, when it comes to turnout gear, you really can't put a price on a life on that.
No, sure.
So, but there is things that we don't need at town on turnout gear. And there's maybe a couple of options that we would benefit with. So we didn't go through all of it as a group, get one thing down.
You guys need to get together and go through this for him, see what you want.
Then put everybody on what you need.
I'll put a pack on you here. I'll put a pack on you. Wouldn't be much good. I couldn't carry it.
I bet you, here he is.
Uh, he looks good.
Yeah, you can.
Probably not. We don't have steel balls. Do they work on a walker?
So do you wanna copy this?
Okay.
Um, I got a quick question. From the air pack.
Uh huh.
You mentioned looking at a needle when they got down low. Do those not come with a, a bell on? Back when I used to wear them, they had bells.
Yeah, the, actually Drager has a whistle. And, and the bells, if you, if you think back to the old trunk air pack and you had a bell right here on your belt mounting regulator.
Yeah, it has a bell. When it got so low, it went off.
Yeah, and when you, when you fall down and you get in debris, that bell doesn't work.
No.
As, as well as it should. So what Drager has is we have, we have a four-way whistle. We have a whistle that goes this way and a whistle that goes this way. So it, it's really hard to cover off four ports.
Well, a lot of times you're in a house fighting fire, you can't see a gauge, but you can hear that bell.
Yeah, and, um, the way the air packs, the, the new technology in the air packs is you, you, it's, you have a thirty-minute bottle, a forty-minute, a forty-five-minute bottle and a sixty-minute bottle. Okay, well, I can tell you right now, we have sixty-minute bottles on my department and I'm good to get seventeen minutes out of a sixty-minute bottle. I suck a bottle out of the bottle.
Some guys, like Payne, when he breathes harder, so his, his thing didn't go last long.
So.
Yeah.
So with the, with the technology today, the, the, it's, the electronics inside of that take your breathing rate and it'll tell you how many minutes you have.
Okay.
Um, I just delivered a, a pack today down to Wade at Fayette County and took it out of the box and it, you know, it come up that it had sixty minutes and we put it on and it dropped down to like forty-seven minutes. And he's like, what's going on? And I said, well, because you're breathing hard.
Breathing.
Slow your breathing. You know, there's a lot to it. There's techniques and stuff like that that you can learn and, um, you know, and I'd be more than happy to help with that. I just, um, basically just wanted to come in and say, hey.
You want part of that?
What?
Yeah, that's good.
Good. I get back on my heart, but.
No, I thought we'd gone through classes of all the gear.
Oh, yeah.
Why don't you get back on the fire department? It's fun, fun.
I'll sleep better tonight.
All right. So like I said, I'm here. Uh, you guys have my card. You call anytime. Uh, if you've got questions, um, I'll wait to hear back from you guys on, on when to, when you wanna get together. Um, and then I'll bring, um, I'll bring demo, my demo packs and, uh, gear and, um, I'll try to get a sizing set so that we can get different sizes and boots and.
That's big for some of us.
So.
I'd say you have a shot and everything.
Go ahead.
We'll go from there. What's the weight on the gear now?
Uh, our, a full outfit of firefighter right now is right around, uh, a hundred and seventy-five. That's air pack, the wet, wet turnout gear, boots, yeah.
That's light.
Yeah, um, I'll bring in, I'll bring in a, a little thing that we do with the ISO dry that shows you the difference in, in weight. Um, we have a, we have an airbag. We can get into all that. Um, I don't, everybody now is like, well, you shut up, get out of here, get out of everything. I don't wanna overstate my welcome, so.
It's okay.
I appreciate it. Uh, you got my card. Any questions? We use spearhead getting everything together and let me know when we can do that. Okay?
All right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You safe up there?
Yep.
Been riding along with Mr. Barrett. You're up.
I'm up. You might not wanna listen to me. I just got a couple of things to begin with. You guys that's leading the town board, I wanna personally thank you for doing the job that you've done. You've done a good job. So be it. And I wanna thank you for it myself.
Thank you.
All right, number one. We need that junk cleaned up back behind my house around the work building. That old snow blade's still sitting out there that I brought up over a year ago, probably.
It needs crap.
Huh?
Needs crap.
I, I might be picking, I'm gonna pick it up and shovel the snow with it. We can't use it. We got no dump truck that it'll fit on. It needs to be gotten rid of. It's sitting there beside the road. Um, the old sandbox where the sand used to be piled up, it's falling down, tearing up. There's no sand being piled there. I don't want the sand piled there because when it rains, it washes over into my yard. That needs to be.
Stop it no more, dude.
That needs to be tore down and hauled off. And there's a lot of junk sitting out there to the east side of the building. Broken streetlights, broken street signs. It needs to be sorted through and what needs to be thrown away, thrown away. I don't know what all's laying there. I walked up there today and there's a lot of stuff laying there. I don't know what's good and what's not.
That's the spare, Tom.
But, uh.
There's a lot of spares. We get a lot of parts in the salvage parks.
That stuff's still good.
Yeah.
It's all the other streetlights.
Was I looking at the wrong place?
Hey, I'm guessing.
No, we just figured out it was aluminum and now we can sell it.
Sounds like we're gonna have to hurry up and do it.
I thought it was pop though.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, number two. When are we gonna get back on the junk automobiles?
That's Tom's area.
Huh?
Not my area. That's, that's, uh, we want.
I don't know who spoke, you tagging them, whatever, but.
Uh, we can stop, we can't.
We started on it and all once it's quit.
No, I, I don't think so. I think the issue is.
I seen one moved the other day. It's the first one I've seen moved.
He's done your cars around town.
Oh, I thought I was talking about Crown Victoria.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I need to go get the car.
Uh, so I will see this on, in terms of any junk vehicles you see, uh, we value your eyes. All you have to do is just give us a call, tell us where the junk vehicle's at. Maybe we're, we're not aware, but we will immediately attack it.
Gone, some of it's not. They're still, it's all over town. It's just not by my house. Well, again, I'm talking about the junk automobiles.
Well, that's fine. If, cause it. By ordinance, they can't just leave junk.
You got, you're not working on the ordinances. You're letting them lay. The boy behind me in the old trailer, he moved his the other day. It's gone. Picture come and got it. But you got a house sitting up here by the railroad track. It's got a half a dozen race cars. He's got cars sitting behind his garage. They've been sitting there forever.
I stopped to go speak to them today about that issue.
Yeah.
And they're not being tagged, they're not being moved. Can you tag them?
I didn't tag them because I spoke to the owner. She said she's gonna move it. Yeah. So, so we are actually, I, 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 I'm not sure where, what you're thinking in terms of where that information's coming from, but we are actually actively working ordinances.
I don't know.
And we'd like to continue to do that. But we also do solicit your help in that matter.
Because in my book, it needs to be, be got back on too.
Yeah, no, I, we, we hear what you're saying and that's what we're here for. So, but your help is greatly appreciated. If you have something that's, that's a bird specifically under your saddle that you're thinking that is really creating a problem, let us know and we'll go handle it immediately. So that, that offer stands for the community. Ten days, once we issue an ordinance violation, they have ten days to, to abate the, the problem.
So you do issue him an ordinance violation?
I issue you a warning.
Warning.
More or less saying if you don't move it, we'll come out and issue you the violation.
So you've got ten days.
You've got ten days. Correct.
Are you documenting?
Yeah.
Do you give a ver, so you give a little bit of warning?
I love the paperwork with the, the residents.
You spoke to a resident?
Correct.
And are you documenting?
We try to always speak, speak to them first.
Speak to a resident.
And then we also send a certified letter. And we don't start the time, the, the clock doesn't start until we show proof that either one, we've spoken to them, or two, that they've received a certified letter.
I knew you spoke to them last night.
Yep, there you go. So, and we'll continue to do that. Again, that's what we're here for.
Okay, so, but from the moment you speak to them, you gave them a warning, that's documented then.
Ten days.
And the, the ten days starts then.
And at that point, when we go back out, the problem hasn't been abated, they're issued an ordinance violation.
Sure.
And they, still, that clock then continues. And if it's not abated again, the second time, that ordinance violation actually doubles by, by the standard that's been set to this point in the.
Have you got, uh, anybody towed them, made them move?
Uh, we do have the authorities, the town is written into ordinance that we could actually tow, um, if that, that becomes a necessity. The other thing that we can do is, uh, we're also set up through Hagerstown Court so that if they're not paying the fines and they're not abating, um, the ordinance violation, then we can actually take it through Hagerstown Court as well.
Get my ass whipped.
But we appreciate that, that input. That's what we wanna hear, so.
Whatever however, it just needs to be got back on, in my book. Next thing. I'm gonna step on some feet now and I'm probably gonna hurt some of them. What's this I've heard about somebody bringing it up about the fire department? No longer supposed to haul water to nobody. You're not supposed to do it. Whatever. You've heard anything about that?
Nobody on this board.
Huh?
Nobody on this board.
Somebody's done it, cause I was told by several people that it's been brought up.
Has been brought up?
That there was a couple of boys, I guess, got jumped on too at the fire department the other day. They were plainly told that they were not allowed, the way I heard it, to even haul water to anybody anymore. We've done that for years and you remember. We would get paid for it. So sometimes we would, sometimes we wouldn't. We had it in with, we even filled swimming pools. We even had it in with some of the old farmers that we filled his swimming pool. We were allowed to draft the water out of that pool if we needed it. And then we would be responsible for putting the water back in there. But I don't see how, or even why somebody would wanna talk that way.
Well, is the town charging? Well, uh, let me go ahead, elaborate on that if I can, okay? If you don't mind. Larry Harris is wanting to shut the fire department down.
No.
Yes, don't, no.
No, I wanna, I wanna, Terry, Terry, right now, you answer your question.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Terry, did, was anybody brought in to the town?
I've got to take it down a notch.
Did you get money? Did you get money?
Take it down a notch.
And you told me the other night, they had to come through you. They come through you.
We're not listening.
I'll see it. Again, Terry, you said the other night that they have to bring the money through you. Did you get two checks from, or you, of anything from Lois Cornet?
Yes, we did.
Did Jasper give you some money?
We got.
Did Terry get the money? Cause Terry said it has to come through him. But Terry told me Thursday night, he didn't have the money. Thursday night, you said there wasn't no money. I mean, Terry told me there wasn't no money.
We did get a check.
But I do not want the fire department going anywhere, Scott. What I wanna know is what's going on with the fire.
That's it, run.
Terry.
Well, anyways.
Terry, we did receive a check from Lindsey Road.
We jumped on Jasper.
We did receive a check from Lindsey Road.
Because we went out and filled up whales for somebody. He doesn't want the trucks going out unless we're on the run. He don't wanna see us running or anything like that. He doesn't wanna see us training. We've lost two people because he's over in his house taking pictures, videotaping us. And then he calls John up, starts chewing him out, which is not right. We had a couple of girls that wanted to try out. They're out there washing trucks, doing what they wanna do. They let it because they felt like he was some kind of sick pervert. They didn't mention a whole lot about it. He's over to take pictures of us. It's making us very uneasy, man. So, no. It's not right, what he's trying to do.
Let's back up a minute. I didn't aim to cause a big argument.
Well, I just wanna.
I just wanted an answer to my question. That's all I wanted.
Your answer is, he wants only trucks to go out, only when we're having emergency. He wants to make sure we do not fill up people's whales. He wants to close the police department down, the fire department down. If he does that, that's gonna take everybody's home insurance.
Sky high.
Sky high. It's gonna make your property taxes sky high. When they shut the apartment down about, for about a month, Powell's insurance went up thousands of dollars that month. And plus, if you shoot, if you shut them down, the town's not gonna get grants. They're not gonna get no loans because there's says, where's your nearest fire protection? No?
Yeah.
Cambridge, if they get lucky. Cambridge doesn't want this territory. I've already talked, had business meetings with them. Uh, but if they do shut it down and somebody's house here catches on fire, they call the fire department. They might get lucky, get to be here in twenty minutes or so. It might be too late. Or they might even be working on another structured fire. And they ain't gonna stop for that structured fire to come here. And that's gonna be a big lawsuit. So the fire department, the only change that needs to be done is the residents and the town and township has to support the department fully. Safety of the town and township is priority one of this panel here. Okay? Now, why he's doing this here, I don't know. But also he has no right to be over there taking pictures of us, calling John up, calling everybody up, chewing them out because we're out here doing our job. We're training. Those trucks, we have to run those trucks to train. If we catch a hydrant, it's because we're training with the hydrants. When we open up a hydrant, it does good. It also flushes out the lines. Sometimes the hydrants don't get flushed like they should. With the fire department doing this, it also helps the hydrants. It helps the lines circulate through. Cause they don't get flushed. It's not Bruce's fault. It's not anybody's fault. It's just how it is. Small towns, it's usually how it goes. Um, but you gotta have those departments full of force. That's priority one. And it just breaks my heart. I've got about thirty years on the fire department. We got two retired firefighters right there. Sandra was on the fire department too. They know what I'm talking about.
Fifty-something.
You got me beat.
All right, you want the horse and carriage. I got no car.
Sounds like.
But I want yous to know, I didn't aim to cause no trouble.
No, it's been, it's been.
I just get, I wanna have that out, no, out.
And here's another thing. If this man's gonna be on the town board and he's gonna jump up and run off every time somebody brings something up.
I'm not passing judgment on anybody.
Well, I am. I'm allowed to.
But the thing is, it sounds like that, uh, the fire department, as well as the board and, and the township, all need to get together and have a, you know, hey, this right here is what we expect out of you and this is the way things will be done and be done with it.
I just wanna be, be clear.
No one individual should ever.
Well, that's.
Approach somebody out here with a complaint. You should have somebody with you always.
Well, when he did do that, I did call Wayne County Sheriff. They did file a report. Two of my guys did file a report against Larry Harris. So it's in the CAD. You can check it out. If they had attorney, I had somebody check into it. Tommy checked in on it. Um, so it's in there.
No, I, I think, if I can just interject here for a moment. And I, I don't wanna talk about any individual. What I wanna say is this, and, and I think this is probably a good thing for all of us to hear. Uh, first of all, let me say what a supporter I am of the fire department and, and as a representative of the police department. Of course, we're partial. They're our brothers and, and, but I will tell you one thing. This community should be very, very proud of the fire department you have in place and the guys that volunteer their time for the fire department. To me, that's big. I mean, let's remember that. They volunteered their time for your community because they care about the health and welfare. Now, I'm not going to talk about an individual. I'm going to say this. If you interfere with a fire department personnel or police department personnel in the course of their duties, you're committing a crime in the great state of Indiana. I'll be very clear about that. It won't be tolerated in this community or in any other. When these folks are out there trying to do their jobs, you'll leave them alone. They're out there doing, risking their lives in many cases. So I'm not gonna get on the soapbox about it, but I am gonna put that piece of information out there and make sure that nobody can ever say they weren't clear on that.
And Tommy, you said a key word is interference.[1794.47]
And Tommy, you said a key word is interference.
Yes, sir.
A citizen has a first amendment right to go photograph the police department, the fire department. Now, you may not like it, and it, and it, and it doesn't feel right, but, you know, you have to not worry so much about what a, what a resident is doing. This council has, has, has been very supportive of the police department. We've done everything we could to support the police department.
I agree.
And our town fire department.
Oh, I agree.
And that's who you, that's who you answer to, that's who you should worry or concern yourself with is, is dealing with the town council because the council's elected to do, our, our first priority is public safety. And that includes that. So, so police department and fire department are two big goals, uh, uh, main goals of, of any town council to, to try to do their best to maintain. And I think that this council has, has, has done that in the past, and, uh, I think that you don't need to really worry about that going forward.
It's, it's also an excellent point you made, Rob. And what we're talking about here is differentiating between first amendment and freedom of speech and actually interfering.
Right.
And listen, a healthy debate is always, is always, we're not all ever going to agree politically or on any kind of topic, and we're not looking for that.
Is I think, because I've seen people do this, and I'm sure at least two of them, sure that Cedric has to, don't keep talking about it, that's. But I've seen people actually get in their vehicles and follow us, and that's illegal. And they're sitting, oh, where, 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 so they're going to follow to see what's going on. I've seen that.
There, there, to his point, there's a pattern of behavior that needs to be addressed, and it will address that. It is being addressed from a law enforcement perspective. And again, I'm speaking on a broad scale. I'm not speaking about any one individual. The key is how you make your points. You don't have a right to make your point any way you want. You don't have a right to threaten, you don't have a right to harass, you don't have a right to get in people's face and scream. You have to make your, your point in a civil, in a civil way. And that, that's welcome. I think we all agree with that. So let's just try to remember that and let cooler heads prevail. We're not always going to agree, but we are all going to be treated respectfully.
Scott, I think personally that, 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 you know, you've got the board on your side. You know, just one, don't let one dictate what's going to go on, you know?
I'm just making everybody aware of what's going on.
I know the why is, is pro-fire, pro-police, these guys here that are on here now, and just don't let one individual tarnish that, you know? If it comes into, to a legal thing, Tom and him can handle that.
We've talked, stuff like that. I just, like I said, I just wanted to make everybody aware of what, what's going on, because I've had hundreds of people come up and ask me, why does Larry Harris want to shut the fire department down, police department down? And I go, I don't really know the why. He won't give me a straight answer at all. He wants to run and hide.
Well, he's one person. Just don't, you know, that, that don't.
I just want.
Don't dictate what the board's got you back.
I just want him to find out why he wanted to do this.
Well, I don't know. I can't answer that. But the board's got you back, and the new board's got you back. I'm sure of that.
Let me know who said it.
You, you, you need, really need each other, so don't.
Oh, I know. I love you guys.
Just don't go to the level that, that somebody else has got to.
One of the things you can't do, you can't let a truck sit there for six months and think you're going to go out and jump in it and it won't start.
Right.
By getting the trucks out on a routine basis, getting time, getting them heated up, you're going to find, oh, we've got a problem. So you can address that before you actually need it in the event of a fire or something.
Yeah, especially your trucks. You know, you've got the gaskets and the seals and stuff. They'll drop on you then, one of the guys, and nothing, so.
That's why we run.
I don't know why.
Why we train, catch hydrants.
That's part of the, that's part of the weekly chat.
Uh, by, uh, somebody just wondered, why weren't you on the panel? Well, we couldn't get them up on the panel for time. Fanny Claus.
He's going to get on cold.
Ah, I'm used to that.
Let's go on, let's, and we've had enough on this and, and.
I'm done for the night.
I wanted to ask this, did we use to charge people to fill pools and?
Just donations.
Just donations.
Just donations.
They got away from filling pools now, but I have no, no, uh, ifs and buts, you know, the, the people that, that they take the water to, they live in Washington Township. Those people pay for that anyway. I mean, they paid, paid for fire protection and. Like Larry said, even when we were on the department, we always hold water. We always have.
We always have that. And Washington Township goes clear out on Farnershop Parade.
Yeah.
There's no reason to go out there filling pools. It's no problem with that on a truck. It's like, let's fill them, but then.
We fill pools.
As far as I know, there's nothing in the ordinance book that says the fire department cannot do that. There's, so I, I don't think if the fire department does that and they're getting donations, they're doing anything wrong.
We're trying to do it well.
Because we had a, a hose just for filling the pool. I had a little two and a half inch diffuser on the end of it, so it didn't put a hole in the bottom of the pool.
I think if I'm not mistaken, was it the instance in question, that you actually helped us move the well?
Yeah, that's what, that's what it was. Because it's been so dry lately, and I think she still has a little well problem, so I mentioned to her, so she hasn't checked in. So we filled her well up twice already. It's a small well, but that's a light thing, and that's, that's public safety right there. And she's been very sweet about it. She does send us to check in, and I forgot to get it for Rich tonight to bring it to get Terry, so that's my fault on that.
Well, like I said, I don't know what the problem is, his problem is with that issue, but just don't, don't, don't stoop to that level and do anything. Do anything that you regret, because it's not, it's not.
Well, me, can I bring it?
It's too late for you.
I'm done going.
Okay, next. Donnie's not here, so Mr. Jam picks.
I think Donnie's going to bring up the same thing out of you.
Yeah, yeah, we were here for about the same thing. So everything that I wanted to talk about was mainly the fire department, and if the rumor was true, that the fire department was going to be abolished, and it was, it would be a big mistake.
That's a further from, I'm sure that's further from the vice board. I'm sure it's the further from the next boards. I just, I don't know where this, this had come from. I know, but I don't know what to do about it.
Yes. Yeah, because people have asked me the same thing. Is it true that it's going to be shut down?
Right.
I said, I have no idea.
I got tired of people asking me that.
Yeah. And we shouldn't be having that debate, but it just, it happens.
And another thing I was going to talk about was proper to clean up, and Larry had already touched some of it, that, you know, while, if you guys are out riding around, taking notice of something that looks bad, you know, and just follow up on it, make a, make a statement on it. Tell somebody, you know, follow paperwork.
I do a lot of riding around.
When you can see.
So do I.
I can see.
Pooching that walker. Did you ride one of them?
Well, I can see it.
He's got a motor on that walker.
No, I heard.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion for the minutes.
I'll second. I'd like to give you the Azis. Here's my, my report from seven in the day. It can read my writing.
Oh, approved, okay.
Yeah. It's just how many runs we made for the switch, do we?
No.
Same, sir. Thank you.
The motion been made in second to approve the minutes for November the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and also executive session for November the ninth, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the scene. Motion carries. Entertained a motion to pay all claims. I'm going to abstain from that because I was in Tennessee and I didn't get out, get to do this, so.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Motion's been made in second to pay all claims, October sixth, November ninth, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the scene. Motion carries. I'd like to just say a few things here before we adjourn. It's absolutely been a pleasure, a pleasure to, to work with this board up here. I have been so impressed with them. I know I made a lot of mistakes, but they kind of kept me in check. But there's one thing about it, when, uh, we had differences, we checked our, our cells at the door. It did not go no further than that. And it did not come in here the next time around, and I, and I learned a lot, a lesson, or it's, it's easier to have a, a public debate than it is to walk around with on your shoulder. It has, don't do anybody any good. And I couldn't ask for a better, a bunch of people to work with. Uh, I know we got a lot of things accomplished, and I'm proud of the eight years that, that have been here, and I would still, you know, if you need me, help, oh, whatever, just give me your help. I'll, I'll still be available and help whenever I can. But that being said, it's been an honor to, to set this position. And hopefully I can get myself down to North Carolina because we're thinking about moving and.
Yes.
Get back to my family where I should be.
John, I will, I'll second that, and I will say I want to thank the people of Milton, uh, for the privilege of, of serving it for eight years. And this, uh, not just this council, but the prior council I was on for four years, and then this one. It's been an honor working with, uh, them and with these gentlemen here. And, uh, I'm going to be a little sad to go, but I'll be around, and if anybody needs my help, I'll be, I'll be around, so.
And I'll address too that I've enjoyed the forty years, but it's been a lot of different boards, a lot of different people, but everybody had the same goal, the best for Milton, and that's all we can work for.
I would say that the council here has established a good foundation with activities and progress for the town. And I would like to think that new council's going to continue that goal that you guys had already set.
There was one thing I was going to bring up that I forgot. I hope, uh, I talked to Terry about it. You know, we still got these grants out there, and I would still like for, for you guys to let Terry to be involved in that. He won't be making those decisions, whatever, but he can, he knows, you know, what our commitments are, these grants, and what we're getting back, it's not. And I would hope that, that, uh, given the chance, that you guys will let him continue to work on that. Like I said, not make no decisions, but he will keep the board and the community filled in on, on what's going on and where, you know, just, uh, he'll answer questions for you or whatever and, and get the question, but, uh, we're supposed to have a, uh, phone commissioner here at your first meeting, so he can explain some of that too, but, uh, Terry's been to all the meetings and then the core meetings, whatever, and he know, he can, he can answer a lot of your questions, you know, that you got, and I just, uh, uh, he, he's told me, because I asked him if he would, and I wanted to bring it up to you guys, that he'd still like to stay in that position to kind of go to clean and help you guys or whatever and let you know what's going on. Yes.
Resource of information, because you can't document everything.
Right.
I'm glad to do it. I've enjoyed it. It started two years ago with the core committee and then with it in the beginning. There's a lot, a lot going on there, and it's really beneficial to Milton. I mean, we've turned thirty-six thousand dollars of our money into three hundred and thirty-six thousand, so.
Yeah, and I, I, I will say this about you, Terry. I have, uh, never seen anything but integrity and honesty in your dealings with the town, and also, uh, we would not have gotten any of these grants had it not been for Terry. Uh, he went way above his duties as a town clerk, uh, to secure these grants for the town. And that needs to be, that needs to be noted.
That's the key, is for the town.
Okay, next thing, uh, talked to the town attorney, and we had a question about from January the first till the first meeting, he does not want the town without an official. So he said that if majority of the board stays, they can elect officers now that'll just go right over it. So does anybody have an objection to that?
No.
I can see where he's talking from. He said to do not let the town go without an official in town for two weeks or whatever it is till, till the second Tuesday. So I'm not going to vote. Rob's not going to vote because we're not going to be here, but these.
You've got that right to vote though, don't you?
No.
You don't?
I'm not going to vote for a board that I'm not going to be here. I don't have a right to put my vote to the next board coming up.
He won't.
I won't do that, because that's, it's not right. It's not right for me to vote. It's not right for me to vote.
Yeah, I won't vote either. If you're going to do that now, I'm not, I'm not voting. That's.
So I'm going to, I'm going to step out.
Does Terry, does Terry, do you have a right to vote?
No.
Only time Terry votes.
What I'm looking at is that's going to put it down to three votes.
It has to be unanimous.
That'd be unanimous.
Pardon?
It has to be three votes.
It's four. But see, what I'm saying is, is what I'm looking at is it could be up to two men, two of the members, to put somebody where they want them.
Two of us won't do it.
Has to be three.
Has to be three.
It has to be three.
Got to be three.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
So that being said, Terry, you can have that part of it and. I'm not voting, and it's only courtesy that I do not vote.
I'll just open the floor for a nomination.
Okay.
William second.
I'll second that.
Anybody else nominate? All in favor of Phil president?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Give them the up president. Now open up for vice president.
I nominate Cedric.
I'll second.
All in favor of Cedric as vice president?
I can't be pointed.
I got to hear it. It's got to have three. Three of them. Cedric is the vice president for twenty-four.
Are you done, Cedric?
I'm done.
All right. With that being said, it's been a pleasure, guys, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion been made in second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.